Fourth, we call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see. Our first order of business this evening is an approval not required. This plan is to a re-division of Lot Number Two and Parcel A owned by Paul Foley and located at Zero Rochester Road in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. All right. Do we have anybody here? Please come up and introduce yourself and give us a little narrative.
Good evening. I'm Mark Benson from Beals &amp; Thomas, the surveyor for the project.
What are we re-dividing? I know this parcel was in front of us eight, 10 months ago.
Right, the prior A&R plan was approved and we're basically redesigning two of those lots, but keeping the parcel 1A as non-buildable. So we're creating two new lots, Lot Two and Three.
Okay. All right. Now Lot Three does not have adequate access to the frontage to the buildable portions of the lot. There's a guardrail in front there.
Correct. Yeah. It has a frontage, but not usable frontage. So going forward, we were thinking of doing a joint driveway. Making, yeah, making use of the existing bog roads.
All right. Well, any proposed easements of that sort should have been noted on the plan? Proposed easements, driveways, shared driveways, that should be on the plan. They should be marked out in the field, too. But because of our timeline and with ANRs of 21 days, we won't have time to do a site visit before the next meeting. Has an ANOI been done on this property?
Excuse me?
An ANOI, an abbreviated notice of intent to delineate the wetlands and the protected areas?
We have the ORAD.
You have the ORAD? It's because I don't see them delineated on the map anywhere.
Well, the wetland lines are shown, but the flag numbers are turned off because they were... Very many flags. They're very busy planned, so.
Right.
The prior A&R plan had them all on there.
All right.
Which is what the ORAD was written against.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Please.
And I have met with these folks previously. But the mention of the guardrail, I just wanted a clarification. Does that guardrail stop before you get to the property line? Can you access the property currently or?
There's about 11 and a half feet between the guardrail and the lot corner.
All right. So you can enter the property currently?
I drove by it today and it was three of... There's only three or four feet. It's that tight. When I drove by it today, it's already staked out, correct? The lot corner?
Well, the beam poles off of the driveway, the actual points of railroad spike in the driveway. So I did just tape that. I was just there today. So it was 11 and a half feet.
All right. Well, we're gonna have to leave that to the fire department or I expect you'd need a zoning variance in regards to any buildable areas on this property because it doesn't... None of it's marked here. When I drove by it today, there was only roughly three feet. The map here shows it at the very edge of the driveway here. But...
So if I...
Please.
So in the event that you couldn't access the property due to the guardrail, and this is something we talked about the other night at our training session. If you could not access the property at all because of the guardrail, then frontage is illusory and it's not a buildable lot. If you can get onto the property with that driveway, and there's not a given number, percentage or things like that, but the typical rule is if you can access the property from the frontage, then it's... The frontage is not illusory.
Yeah, well, adequate access and adequate access would mean emergency vehicles and fire equipment, and it's not listed on here. I can only go on what was staked out when I drove by today in our private... Previous interactions, and I would think that the fire department would want a say in this. And does the board have any questions? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to prove the A&R with the notation that Lot Number Three is not a buildable lot currently without further zoning relief.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tagatsky. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Tagatsky?
Aye.
Ms. Sordillo?
Aye.
Mr. Williams, aye?
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of ProlleO Concrete Forms Incorporated requesting a special permit in site plan review pursuant to sections 2270, 4341, 5300, 3100, and 3351 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 93 North Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 18, lots 22AR and 22CR in the Village Business Zoning District. The project consists of the construction of a mixed-use building, associated utilities, stormwater controls, parking lots, and access drives. The building will be used as a craftsman tradesman building and have a four-two-bedroom residential units above. We've received an official withdrawal. I thought I had it here on top, but...
I have it handy if you'd like me to read it, sir.
Please.
November... October 10, 2023, Thomas Bot Planner, Town of Carver, Dear Thomas, please accept this as my official notice that I'm withdrawing my application for a special permit for the property located at 96 North Main Street. Thank you, Glenn Creola. Filed with the town clerk and received by the planning office both on October 11.
All right. The chair will accept the motion to accept the withdrawal of the application of ProlleO Concrete?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Ms. Tagatsky, second by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further discussion? No, because the public hearing opened, we don't have that option. All right. Seeing none, Ms. Tagatsky?
Aye.
Ms. Sordillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Our next order of business is public hearing on the application of Nader Mawad Litters Paw requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 58 North Main Street in Carver. Assessors map 16-15-1 for dog daycare, boarding, pet accessories, retail store, and a general business district. All right. Please come on up.
Feel free to bring that closer. I just sent it over there to have it out of people's way, so they...
Hi, Art.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we do our best to put those on the screens, but as you can see, the screens are a bit in flux each day.
That's all right. I see we're working on it.
It's gonna be lovely.
Stuff all over the place here.
We noticed the boxes...
Big.
...here last time.
Yeah. It's gonna be lovely, one of these things.
If you could introduce yourselves and give a brief narrative.
I'm Gordon on behalf of Ned Mawad, and Ned signed me here.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Just a little history of the site. This site was originally approved in the summer of 2003 when the then-owner, McManus, purchased the old Supersports Building where CBS is now and moved it up the street and plunked it on a foundation. In 2010, they sold the site to Chuck Callens who opened a Frosty Dog Ice Cream Shop and Amusement Center. 2015, summer of 2015, Ned purchased the property and has continued to use the amusement center off and on. They're now currently requesting a change of use to operate a daycare, boarding, and pet accessory retail store to be known as Litters Paw. The use is permitted in a general business district by the granting of a special permit by this board. A total of 18 parking spaces are required for this use within the building and of this size. 10 spaces are to be designated for drop-off pickup and retail customers. The remaining eight spaces are for employees. All of those spaces are in the front of the building. These spaces will be clearly redelineated with paint and striping as indicated on the site plan. The interior of the building is to be renovated to create four indoor playrooms that will accommodate small, medium-sized, and large dogs with a separate room for slightly aggressive dogs. The retail space will include the check-in area, and there'll be a separate room provided for boarding prep area. There are 19 kennel areas provided for the boarding. An outdoor play area is to be provided in the rear of the building. That's really the only change to the site. We'll eliminate the 10 or 11 parking spaces that are there by placing artificial turf over it and then fencing the area in so that the dogs can have a place to play and not escape. I'll entertain any questions you have, Ned.
No, thank you. I'm gonna ask you both to... Whoever speaks to sign in for our minute taker, though, Art. When I was looking this up, almost the entirety of the southern driveway entrance is on your other property, 54 North Main Street. Is that gonna be reconfigured or?
The entrance and exit are all on this property.
Okay, because I was... When I looked it up on the Mass GIS system, okay.
You can't rely on Mass GIS.
Right, no, I know that.
On-ground surveys.
It gives us a good idea of what we're working with. But the... So the entirety of the southern driveway is on the lot?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. You're gonna keep the trees remaining on the southern portion of the lot there?
Yes, no change of any vegetation itself. We don't need to touch it.
Water, from what I remember previously for things involving this property, water was proposed to be brought in. Is this... Well, regardless, we're gonna need... The Board of Health is the licensing agency for dog kennels, so we're gonna need their approval, and they'll approve of the well, because I'm not sure if it's a contamination area or not, so.
Now, we have a proposed well site on the front of the property. It meets the Board of Health requirements for setback to the existing septic system.
All right, the setbacks weren't the issue. I don't know if it's within the contamination area, so I'm gonna leave that to the Board of Health because of the dump across the street, and I know previously they were requiring water to be brought in. It never happened, so that's an aspect we'll leave to the Board of Health. How many dogs are gonna be in attendance on a regular basis generally?
We're hoping for like 60 dogs.
60 dogs?
Yes.
Mr. Nader, if you could just introduce yourself to the board.
Yes, my name is Nader Mawad.
Nader?
Yes.
Mawad.
60 between daycare and kennel.
And how many do you plan on overnighting?
19.
No more than 19. Mr. Bot, I don't know if you recall off the top of your head what was the requirements that we set for persons per dog? Was it one and 10?
I know there was a little flux in it. I don't, and I'll have to look up and see what we did. But obviously staffing is critical for this type of use.
Yes.
All the ones we've done so far, you know, knock on table, have, you know, we haven't had any pushback from neighbors on those, but I don't have that number in front of me, but clearly staffing is related to the number of animals you should have on the staff and should be as a consequence of the permit.
All right. It looks like you're getting rid of an existing berm. Is that a vegetative berm or is it a?
There's a small Cape Cod berm on the left-hand side of the front part of the building that was put there apparently for a couple of parking spaces. That's the only thing we really need to remove to make a clean drive out.
All right. All right. All right. While we're addressing this issue, we're going to have to address the landscaping area in front of the building. The parking areas should be screened from the public ways, so we're gonna like to see a landscaping plan that would do some work towards doing that. We're gonna want the dumpster to be bermed, so to contain it, and because there's gonna be food and various other edible substances, we're gonna ask for a vermin control plan in regards to this to be filed with the Board of Health. Lighting, your lights should be on a half hour before and a half hour after the close of business on the street. And off the top of my head, that's all I... All my concerns. Does the board have any?
Do you wanna do a site walk?
Oh, I do wanna do a site walk, yes, yes, because the building's been sitting unused for some time. We wanna take a look around it. What's it... If we were to do... Yep?
I have, I don't know, looking at the... What they have, the location for the retail space, I mean, it looks like the boarding kennels are right there where you walk in, so the dogs will be viewing, basically viewing anybody coming and going into the retail space. I kinda have issue with the animals having that much access to the people and vice versa. Seems like a...
Right, because you're saying that dogs will be coming and going from the boarding areas as the public is walking through, and there could be safety concerns?
Exactly. As well as stress on the dogs when people walking in and out and dogs seeing people coming and going, wondering what's going on. I mean, all the places that I've been to, the dogs have been sequestered from the public.
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
And especially if there's like a retail space, it's, you know, they're kept separate so the dogs don't see everybody and, you know, start causing a whole bunch of noise and everything else.
Is this a retail space open to the general public?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll have to take a look at that on the site walk, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
That also can be rearranged, like that blend, we could move things around, like can move the kennels, make it a different room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to... Yeah, we'll have to see what the...
Yeah.
Looks like inside and everything.
Sure.
The traffic flow looks good. Existing landscaping remain in the rear. Excellent. I don't have a lot of concerns over noise, but I also know you don't have a lot of room to work with on the north side to buffer the quick-use building, and the property on the south side is yours, and it contains some... Clearly very vegetated at this point, so. All right. Site walk. Good time of day for you?
That's a good question. What are we looking at from dates?
It's 24th, so we won't be meeting for three more weeks?
November 14th.
Yeah, three more weeks.
Monday or Wednesday works best for me.
Monday's a great day for me.
Is that the 30th of October?
Yeah, maybe noon time?
The 3rd of October or the 6th of November, your Monday or Tuesday?
I think either one of those.
All right, I just want to clarify.
Either one of those I can work with.
Which... Okay, noon time?
Yeah, I'll shoot for it.
Okay. Don, that's okay with you?
30th, 30th.
Bill? Okay.
30th. The 30th? Or the 6th?
Of October? Oh, yeah, today's a...
So 10:30 or 11:06, which day are we talking about at noon?
Any preference?
11:06 would be better.
11:06 seems to be... All right.
And that'll give the applicant a chance to consider some of the moving parts in the floor plan as well.
Right. We'll want the... Well, is the driveway gonna be existing? The driveway is what the driveway is?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't... We won't need that. The building is what the building is? And the only real changes are where the fence is gonna be out back?
Yes.
Okay.
And just so I captured that, how many parking spaces is the AstroTurf out back gonna cover?
It's about 10 or 11, if I recall.
How many will that remain? Eight, nine, 10, 11?
Still have 18 remaining up front.
18 out... 18 out front?
Yeah.
All right. All right. We wanna hear from the Board of Health in regards to the well, and they're the licensing authority, so we'll need to hear from them. Great. So...
It's a public hearing, so...
Yes. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Nader Mawad Litter Pause to November 14, 2023, 7:00 PM, Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
Make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tagatsky. Further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Tagatsky?
Aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you. Thank you both very much, and we'll see you on November 6 at noon time. Our next order of business is an informal discussion, Wenham PVI LLC is seeking to install a 1-megawatt AC dual-use solar array over the existing Cranberry Bog located at Zero Rochester Road in a residential agricultural and village zoning district. The proposal is to install 2,380 panels with a total area of 1.62 acres above the existing seven-acre Cranberry Bog on a way that will allow for the continued cultivation of the bog. If you would just introduce yourselves and give us a brief summary of your project.
Of course. Good evening. My name is David Berson, David P. Berson, attorney at law. With me tonight here is Kyle Murphy here from Wenham PVI, and they're the prospective purchasers of 27 Wenham Road and the prospective applicants, hopefully in the near future before this board. I'm gonna do my best to kind of keep this somewhat short and sweet, but quite frankly, we're here tonight seeking guidance from this board, kind of in the nature of the section, I think, 32... 32... 3121 of your bylaws relative to pre-application discussion with this board, just to discuss prior to filing. Yeah, exactly.
I see you mentioned section 2300 usage.
Primarily just in my... In the narrative that I had mentioned, what I was referencing just now was just the 3121 of the bylaws.
The prior, right.
Yeah.
So we just want it to be safe?
So, exactly. We're here essentially, you know, our review of the current law, which was passed in 2022, is that these dual-use projects, provided that they meet certain criteria, qualify under the agricultural exemptions of 40A, section 3.
Which we do have listed in our usage zone as exempted properties under that. So it's... This is not... If that's the case, then this won't fall under the large-scale solar take, but we will be asking our legal counsel to give us an opinion.
I appreciate that, and that's part of why we're here before you tonight, is the guidance isn't entirely all that clear, because you do have a section in your bylaws relative to large-scale solar requiring site plan review regardless of whether there's a special permit requirement. Obviously, where this is going to be treated, hopefully, is agricultural, it raises some questions for us as to how we should proceed.
The site plan is still allowed under the agricultural.
Exactly.
And it's just for us to check for safety, and that's really what we're gonna be concerned about. We wanna make sure you meet the requirements. Do you have the 150-foot frontage out front?
I don't believe we do, but as I mentioned, this is an existing cranberry use that has the same, you know, frontage and access. We're going to move the access road off of an abutters property, but other than that, it will remain the same.
Everything is gonna be underground, all the electrical connections?
Kyle, answer that question.
Okay. Pad-mounted or underground? As I see, a very limited space in the front. We just wanna make sure that it's not gonna affect the neighbors in any way, shape, or form. I don't see that you're gonna have any problem with... The setbacks are screening, but I... This is a very small map, and I can't read the numbers on it.
No, and we apologize. We were hoping to have the, you know, an engineered site plan ready for this meeting, but unfortunately, it's... They're still working on it. Obviously, you'll have full plans before you as part of that site plan review process.
Now, is this going to incorporate battery storage?
That's not... It's not currently the plan to include battery storage.
Okay. Should that change, then we will look to make sure that that is outside of all the protected areas, which would be 6,500-foot wetland or 200-foot riverfront because of concerns over contamination.
There was... I know there was a specific question about how the mounting was going to occur. I'm not sure if Kyle wanted to just expound on that, because they will be above the existing Cranberry Bog.
Yeah, the panels would be above the bog, but I believe the question was about the transformer being pad-mounted or underground, and right now it's designed to be pad-mounted, but yeah.
Excellent. What are you gonna use for poles?
For the panels, galvanized steel is the plan. For the panels, uh, galvanized steel is the plan.
All right. Uh, what's the displacement area of the, the pole?
Uh, you ta, are you talking about the area of the bog? Um, but I don't have an exact number.
No, well, I meant, the, give me a rough idea of the size of the pole. Is it going to be an eight-inch pole or?
Yeah, probably six to eight inch.
Okay.
We're planning on I-beams right now.
And the height?
Ten feet above the bog.
Are they going to rotate?
A single-axis tracker, uh, sixty degrees, both east, east to west.
Okay, so tracks the height of the sun, but not the position in the azimuth, right?
That's right, the panels face directly at the sky, um, and they tilt horizontally.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll track the height, but not the direction.
That's right, that's right.
Single axis.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
They'll track east to west?
That's right.
Yes, okay. Uh, this won't create glare or shine on the neighbor's house? It doesn't appear that that would be the case.
There's a very thick vegetative buffer that's existing, and we're not going to disturb that.
Excellent. All right, uh, you're going to have to seek, uh, conservation approval, get an A N O I in regards to that, so we know where the wetlands are. And, uh, now that this is in a village district, but it's my understanding that that's only the first, what, thirty feet of the property?
That's correct, it's along the roadway.
So that's not, that shouldn't be an issue. All right, uh, I, I'd see, I'm not an engineer, so my engineer might have other questions, but I think we've, we've covered most of our concerns. Uh, his concern is going to be, uh, that the roadway is, is safe and accessible for all the vehicles, as will the fire department. Uh, they'll want access to the property. And, uh, off the top of my head, I don't have any further questions or concerns.
All right, so just to make sure, based on this, you guys are just covering up like the north, northeast corner of that bog area, that cranberry bog area?
Uh, yeah, there's, it's an entire bog, there's.
It's two sides of that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, there's two sides to that paper.
Oh, that plan, yeah, sorry.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, okay, there we go. And, all right.
As I mentioned, sorry, there will be better plans.
No, 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 it's, yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
It's on a little bit bigger. So go on, go on for the, uh, for the entire thing, okay?
All right.
Yes.
Extensive.
Seems to be pretty much in the middle of nowhere. To a point, I mean. Yeah, there's a.
Well, it's, it's in the middle of a.
Quite a bit of wooded areas.
Yes. It is a village residential area, so the rear of it is, is pretty, seems pretty remote from what I can tell by the maps. But I don't, I don't have any further questions. Does the board have any further questions, comments or concerns? Please, Mr. Rock.
Depending, uh, potential application date?
Um, we're not sure, I think it really depends on, on two things. One, we still have our, uh, first round of comments that just came back on the A S T G U application, um, and we're still just waiting on that engineered site plan, so at least a few weeks is my guess.
Hasn't there been like a moratorium on this, or has that been finally lifted on new areas?
In Carver, that moratorium, I believe, is deemed to be illegal.
No, no.
From EverSource.
The restructuring, yeah.
Okay, not a.
Not the Carver, not the Carver wide.
A freeze.
Right, we've, we already have a queue position, uh, in the EverSource interconnection queue. Uh, it's, it's a queue position that's, you know, we've, it's changed hands, we acquired it from another solar developer, but this position has been in the queue for at least three years. Uh, it's pretty far advanced, in the Plymouth group study, uh, so once that wraps up, this project will get its I S A out of the Plymouth group study, which I wish I'm sure you're all, I've heard of before.
And the proposed point of interconnection, uh, that should only be the access to, to shut everything off, correct?
It's at the switch, yeah.
Yeah. Will the existing poles be removed?
I don't believe there's any existing poles going out to the, to the bog right now.
Okay, because I, I see utility-owned pole, utility-owned pole.
The poles you're seeing on the plan will be, will be new, they'll be installed for the system.
The what will?
Those aren't existing poles, those are proposed poles.
It should all be underground.
Okay.
Unless the electric, electrical company tells you that you cannot put it underground and they, they specifically tell us why, and it's due to size, shape and topography of your land.
Gotcha, okay. Sure, you'd like a variance effectively?
It, it would be, it would be a waiver on our part, but, um, the way the bylaw was written is unless the utility company says that the only way you can do it because of ledging or whatever the case may be. All right. If you have any further questions, please.
I think I'm all sudden, unless Kyle have any specific questions, but, um, otherwise I, I just wanted to thank you for your time.
No, thank you for coming in and, and talking to us, we, uh, we really appreciate it.
We appreciate you back.
And enjoy the nice company. Um, so we'll look forward to this in the future.
Great.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, our next order of business is an optional pre-application meeting. Plymouth Elks Lodge fourteen seventy-six to construct a new meeting lodge on a leased portion of the Plymouth Airport, South Meadow Road. The area in question straddles the Plymouth Carver line with the actual structure and developed portions falling within Carver limits. Sorry. I'm not here to rush anybody, so take your time. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Love to see, uh, the benevolent and protective order of the Elks, if I'm saying the proper title correctly. I'm familiar with it, uh, my dad was a member, um, and I know you're, you have your four core. Core tenants that you tend to adhere to, so, uh, I'm not saying you're a service organization, but I know you, you're heavily involved with children and veterans and even though you're the Plymouth group, we still welcome you into our, our town if we can.
Good evening, uh, everyone. My name is Rob DeWar here with Bracket Engineering, um, on behalf of the Elks Club. And we have Paul Roginsky with me tonight, uh, he is a member spearheading the project from the Elks.
The head of the building committee.
Excellent.
And, um, just would like, um, as the introduction stated, a pre-submital review of the project with the board, um, receive any initial comments that you may have. Um, I'll try to be concise, but I'll give a little bit of overview of the project we have. Uh, as stated, um, the, the locus, it's a part, portion of the Plymouth Airport property. Uh, it's going to be a leased area from the airport to the Elks Club. It straddles the Plymouth Carver line, um, about, about ninety percent of that lies within Carver, including all that area is the proposed, uh, building. So here's our locus area, this is a little bit Plymouth, underestimated, falls just over Carver. And you can see that this, you know, right now it's basically just fill pile, scrub brush, it's not much to look at. The area does fall within the airport district.
I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but yeah, that's exactly, my, my minute taker laid into me, so I gotta.
Yeah, the, the locus falls within the airport district, um, there's no conservation restrictions in the area, there's no wetlands, there's no zone two, nothing like that. Just swat this out here. Here we have the proposed layout of the por, parcel. Let's move this. Uh, we've got about a twenty-five hundred square foot building here. With that, it would be serviced by, um, two parking areas, one on the side, one in front of it, um, totaling thirty-six spaces altogether. Utility-wise, uh, it actually would be serviced mainly by Plymouth utilities, we're coming in off of the water line that's on the Plymouth side. Uh, the sewer would be tied into the airport sewer system. Electric would be coming off of the electric lines that are coming down, overhead wires here, so, and they'd be tied in, so no impact to, um, any utilities in the street. Uh, they'll all be coming in off of either the locus itself or the, um, airport side on the Plymouth side of the line.
No, go ahead, I, I didn't mean to.
No, that's right. In terms of storm water management, um, we do have all low, low-impact designs, um, consisting of rain gardens and then subsurface infiltration, uh, that can handle up to a hundred year storm and as well as treating all the one-inch, uh, storm water quality. We do have a screened dumpster area, this facility, uh, it's about seventy-two seats. Um, it does have a sort of catering kitchen, it's not a full kitchen, but it's enough for prep work, um, there's a pizza oven in there. So we do have a dumpster area for that. In terms of landscaping, uh, we are proposing, um, there are some dedicated landscape areas in terms of landscape plant, plants, trees and count, that's yet to be determined. But we do have also proposed street trees to provide some screening along the road. I think with that said, I know it'll entertain any questions and comments you may have.
Where were you putting the well?
Uh, there's no well, um, it comes in off of, um, the water that's on the Plymouth side, there is municipal water that would be piped in.
Excellent, excellent.
And that would be piped in both domestic and the building is proposed to be sprinkled as well, so there will be a fire service coming in.
Okay. I'm going to go through the issues that I see with it just off the top of my head.
Absolutely. Sorry, let me just grab my, uh.
Sure. And none of these are deal breakers, but I'm just going to go, I'm just going to go through with the issues off the top of my head. Typically, parking's required behind the main building. We are allowed to give up to eight spaces in front of the building. The parking lot, width of the parking lot buffer is based on the amount of parking spaces. We can work with you in that because you're the area that you're in next to the airport and be behind the airport, and there's no residential structures, but we're going to require screening by the street however we do this. You're gonna have to have a vegetative buffer around the entrances to, public entrances to the building?
Yep, and we do actually have, that's a ten-foot vegetative buffer on every side.
It's, 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 I, I, so tiny. We're going to ask for vermic control plants, you're going to have food and beverages there. The dumpster should be bermed and, and screened. Delivery area?
Uh, it's not currently delineated, it would be, uh, yeah, roughly in this area, and we can delineate that on the plan.
Okay.
There's a side, you know, uh, entry door to the kitchen over in that area, so.
Uh, the fire department's going to want access to, I'm going to have to check on that, because, uh, I don't know what our engineer's going to say about the two entrances being directly across the street from each other. I, I'm not an engineer, I, I, that might be an issue with them.
Okay.
You say there's no wetlands?
Uh, none.
So you, you're still going to have to go to conservation commission, have them say that there's, there's no wetlands on the, on the, on the property?
Okay.
So, uh, again, it, honestly, I, I would, I would recommend moving the, the building forward on the lot to save yourself a lot of headaches, but that's the biggest obstacle, I think, that, that you have to overcome in this, uh, particular scenario.
For the parking? Yeah, and we were, you know, we were intending to request a waiver, um, on the parking.
But again, we can only go up to eight spaces, so that, that becomes a problem. How many spaces are there?
It's thirty-six total.
Again, uh, so thirty-six would mean you'd be required to have a thirty-six foot buffer on three sides of your parking lot, screen it from the road, but again, you're in that particular area of the airport, so I, that, I don't think that, that's going to be an issue, and as long as it's appropriate out front and it, it screens everything that needs to be screening, I don't, I don't think that there'll be any real issues with this.
For the eight spaces or the full, full parking build that we have?
I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't approve forty spaces because it, it sets a particular tone in, in that it can be allowed and should be allowed, whereas our, our bylaws say that parking is prohibited from in front of the building, should we choose to go against that, we're allowed to do eight spaces, up to eight spaces, so. And we've done a couple spaces here and there. But forty's a lot.
Okay. So this is directly across from weather bank?
Well, that's, that's what I, I, I don't know what Andy would say about the two entrances being directly across the way from each other, so I, I, I hate to form an opinion other than to say that our engineer will probably have an opinion on that, so.
Sure.
Either it's yea or nay, so I, I can't even guess for Andy. Other than, I, I like the project, I, I like what you're doing, and, uh, we would love to welcome you into the community. Questions, comments, concerns?
Um, the airport has put up all these wonderful signs, gate one, gate two, so you would, it wouldn't have a gate per se, just a, uh, large entrance or for your signage? You're not going to mess up gate six A or you don't go like turnpike?
The idea was to sort of keep the similar, much like those signs, that, the similar aesthetic to the signs.
But you, you would have entrance rather than gate?
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And it is completely fenced off from the airport, and there was, in the back, so.
Correct.
Somebody's not going to drive out and, oh, what a wonderful road I'm on, you know?
No, there's an existing chain link fence that sort of delineates our back leased area, and that would be maintained.
Yeah, all right, so you're isolated, okay.
This is a completely empty lot, right?
Correct.
Yes. I mean, a way to alleviate the parking issue would be to shift the building to the front and, uh, put the parking around to the other side, otherwise, like I said, I think we're looking at having to file for a variance.
Yeah, but how does that help people get into the building if everything's parked behind the building, but the entrance is in the front? Everybody's going to park behind the building and walk around the building to get into the front.
Well, who says the entrance has to be in the front? I, I, I can only go by what the, the bylaws say.
The entrance is facing, the parking lot is facing opposite end of the road, in the back of the building, front of the road.
Can the entrance go on the side of the building?
Yeah, there is a, um, yeah, we can, we can look at that.
Call the front the side, then the side's the side, and the back is the front, and the other side's the other front.
Yeah, we had put between the airport and the rear, um, and then sort of the, the other buildings, I know they're across the line of Plymouth, uh, but sort of the character of the neighborhood was to have the parking in the front, um, you know, not, as to not interfere with any airport activity or, so that's, we had maintained that, um, with the intention of requesting, you know, a variance in way to that bylaws, so, but we can certainly take another look at it.
So the, the parking requirements are for commercial buildings or warehouses? This is a.
The parking requirements are for, if it, if it's a, if it's a parking lot, it goes behind the main building, right? Commercial, industrial.
Parking's parking.
Yeah.
So Shaw's supermarket is facing the whole wrong way, because all the parking's in front of the building?
Yeah, I don't know when the law was instituted, but it's on the books now.
So technically, the front setback is what faces the road. So Shaw's does have some parking spaces between the front setback, which is the side of their building, and that parking space, but the majority of those parking spaces would be in the side yard setback. But once again, just because somebody did something before, doesn't mean it should be our standard for so moving forward.
Maybe our standard is what's wrong.
Well, I, our standard is to keep the rural. Well, our, our standard is to keep the rural character and provide street.
Rural character.
Street, tree-lined streets.
Rural means few houses and far apart. When, when did we not pass that?
Well, we passed screening requirements in order to help maintain the rural character of the town. We require.
So make the front look nice and pretty, and then screen it so you can't see it from the road?
Well, it's, it's in the master plan, and that's what I have to work on. That's our bible up here. I know, I, I get your point, but.
The leaniesque or where's the?
I, I have to keep it within what we can do. Because an organization like the Elks, nobody else, I'd, I'd like to have more move into this town, whether they're Plymouth or Carver, it doesn't matter.
We need to.
They're a great organization, they do good work, and I would like to welcome into the community, and I will work with them to do that. Questions?
Nope.
Do you have any questions for us?
We've been starting over.
No, I don't think so. I, I think that basically covers it, and we're certainly gonna take another look at the, at the parking. It sounds like requesting that variance is going to be an uphill battle.
It is, huh, it is gonna be. But, you know, if that was the side yard, I, I don't, I, I'm not, I don't want to tell you. I just know that there's options out there for you to work with.
It's easier to change it on the plan than to build it, don't we?
We'll have to review it with the airport as well, so make sure that they're okay with it.
Oh, with the, yeah, okay. Because it's leased, right?
Yes, yes, it's a leased area.
All right, yeah. If there's no further questions from anybody, I want to thank you, honestly.
Thank you.
If we can work with you, please, we will, I personally will be happy to.
I'm gonna read up on the, because I want to know more about it.
That's great. Elks.org.
I will. Years ago, they had a B here that really wasn't a B.
Yeah, no, I heard horror stories.
Been there, done that. So I really look forward to.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it'll be great. We'll just work together.
We need that.
Thank you, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Town Planner Notes. Mr. Bott?
Thank you for welcoming me back. So we are in the midst of budget time right now in addition to a number of other things, so it's, I usually don't say we're busy because we're always busy, but we're busy just with the operations of, of just town government. We did talk about having a November hearing for procedures and policies changes, and we're looking forward to put that ad in. For the most part, as we talked about before, there's no doubt if you're passing a bylaw that you have to advertise. There's no doubt if you're passing regulations that you have to advertise. For policies and procedures, it's not so well scripted, but I, I believe in proceeding with an abundance of caution and looking at those things. And some of the things that are currently in our, you know, regulations need some, some updating, or in our policies and procedures. And I think we talked before about you folks sort of taking a look at those in advance because we advertise, you know, oftentimes when we advertise for zoning bylaws, you know, word for word. But this ad is not gonna be so scripted because we're sort of sorting through those procedures, so. So that's one of our, our big pushes to get that sort of carved out and advertised amongst other things, to have a November discussion about that. We also received an email from our partners at Serpent regarding the housing production plan, and they would like to come to a planning board meeting in early December, likely 12/12, with some discussion about the housing production plan in the midst of upgrading. So we will look at making sure that we don't overload the schedule with too many things that particular night. The second meeting in December falls on Boxing Day, which is, everyone knows is the day after Christmas. And I'm not sure we're gonna get a huge crowd from the board here the day after Christmas, so we may look at our December schedule to talk about, do we want to look at maybe a meeting on the 12th and the 19th, or the 5th and the 19th for December? You know, sometimes at the end of the year, it's pretty quiet, and you can get away with just one meeting on the 12th. But just wanted to put that out there that I don't expect a lot of people to be here for the second scheduled meeting on December 26th. I mean, if you want to say, oh, we're all into that, but I just have a feeling that, and not everybody's afflicted by this, but I have, I have a problem with, with Christmas cookies, so I may, I, I, I may be.
Drunk on sugar?
I, I may be, I may be less coherent than I am tonight. So that's what we've got going on. Folks at Serpent, want to come and chat with us about HPP and look at our December schedule, so consider the merits of your calendar. We got time right now if we want to look at making meetings on the first and the third, or this third and the, you know, second and third, to look at that, but I, I just don't think we're gonna.
I'd be kind and leaning towards your suggestion of the, the 5th, the, the first and the, the third, and if we need to. Now, Serpent's coming to talk about the housing production plan. I know currently they're working on the cluster zoning bylaws for some towns.
We're talking about the MBTA bylaws?
No. The, the, the cluster developments. In other words, I thought, I'm pretty sure it's on ours, but nobody's used it in this town, so I think we want to encourage that and get people to start clustering in areas and leaving large open areas, and I don't know if that's something Serpent, I know that it's one of the programs that they have out there right now. I don't know if that's something they'll be work, willing to work with us on. But we also have the MBTA to work with also, right?
Correct, because, you know, initially, when the MBTA bylaw was passed, a lot of folks thought, well, we'll just not take the money, and we won't do it at all. But apparently, the administration is upping the ante on those sort of things, so we are likely going to be working, as we have been, we've been, we've been having discussions with them on a staff level about the MBTA bylaw. And the thing that I have said a, a number of times is that in order to do a significant size residential development, or something that the MBTA would be looking at, that sort of density, you would like to have, have a public water supply and a, a, a treatment plant in order to process, you know, the utilities for something like that. And those things are expensive. Whether the market is there in Carver for someone to make those investments, to say, I'm gonna spend, I'm gonna make up a number here, I'm gonna spend $10 million on infrastructure that I have to try to get that money back from what I'm gonna get out of rents on these properties and purchase prices on those properties. It's conceivable that we could make a bylaw that no one ever uses because the marketplace. I think that is what I've said in a number of public meetings. You know, Carver hasn't had a 40B in a very long time, and that is largely due to the fact, in my opinion, that for a 40B, the market rate units have to underwrite the affordable units. And that upper part of the market hasn't been there to entice a developer to do something like that. And maybe we run into the same thing with the MBTA bylaw, but we certainly want to make sure whatever we put together, and what we put together with our partners at Serpent is well-crafted. But at the same time, I don't think we need to, we, it doesn't need to be unique to Carver. There are a lot of other places. Obviously, the, the soil conditions are unique to Carver, but I think that what we'll see coming out of that is sort of a template for folks to use. Cape Cod Commission is famous for doing model bylaws and templates and things like that, so we continue to work with them. And part of that HPP discussion will likely be about MBTA as well, because, you know, we need housing. Massachusetts, the Northeast needs housing in order to sustain, you know, the businesses that make Massachusetts a swell place to live. Because if nobody can live here because they can't afford it, then all those businesses go somewhere else, and all the benefits that have come to communities through Massachusetts from commercial tax bases start to fade, and then it just gets, you, we, I'm not saying we're headed to be Detroit, but, you know, people gotta have a place to live, people gotta have a place to work in order to maintain the quality of life and the taxes that people are accustomed to paying, because while people think, heck, taxes may be high in Massachusetts without a substantial commercial base throughout the region and enough housing to support those, that just is, it's, it's not a pretty sight. So planners, we're in this for the long run. We look at 20-year planning horizons for a reason, but whatever we produce, the market may not be ready for, it may not be ready for years, but we've got to have something put together that, that meets those needs. Take care.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bott. Discussion minutes, I don't have any particular notes. Any planning board member notes? Seeing none?
Absolutely.
The chair will take, oh, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely, you do. Excellent, excellent. You go right ahead, sir. Great news, especially for our football fans in town. The Carver High School is just destroying all comers. I think that they have an undefeated season so far this year. The Carver Cowboys youth football, all levels are already established into the playoffs, so we all have our seats so far. It's just a matter of final placement. And the Super Bowl, I'm not sure the exact date. I do believe that it is going to be the second Sunday of November. We'll be here in Carver for the youth football, at least for the Pee Wees division. So.
They're all in?
So far, we're all in the playoffs.
Excellent.
And we have been, we've been on a tear. I think the most that we have, that each team has is one loss, so we are moving right along, and I think the, I'm not sure, but I believe the midgets may be undefeated.
So we're doing better than the Patriots?
Yes, we are. We could probably take them at this point. So, very exciting news on that front.
Excellent. The chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 9/26/2023.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatsky. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatsky.
Aye.
Ellen Stiloh says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. I think that's everything. The chair will accept the motion to adjourn.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatsky. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatsky.
Aye.
Ellen Stiloh says aye.
Ellen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all, and have a very safe and happy Halloween.